Roll call, immediate order. This is the regular meeting of Bellavista City Council, December 16, 2024. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great and essential law of God.
I roll call.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Here.
Hanschel.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Here.
Thank you. It's now time for citizen input for the rules. There's a three-minute per person time limit to address the council on any topic of that person's choosing. First person on the list is Chris Nelson of One Harrington Drive.
I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Snow for their meaningful service to the people of Bellavista. I did have some glass plaques made for you guys from multiple people in our community. However, they're on the mail truck today. Obviously, the day that comes at eight o'clock at night, they're being delivered, so I'll make sure I get those to up to you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laura Gentry of 12 Mason Lane.
Hello. I just wanted to thank Doug Fowler for serving for the last eight years so diligently. He has put countless hours into visiting people with problems, researching issues, and calling people and addressing their needs and concerns. I know because I'm one of the people he has helped. His expertise and willingness to serve this city will be greatly missed. I hope those who follow in his footsteps will be as committed and responsive to the citizens of Bellavista and the needs of its community. I hope Doug enjoys all the free time he's about to get, and I wish him and his wife Rose the very best.
Thank you. It's now time for council member reply.
Would you like to say something about my things now or later?
Why don't we do it all at once?
Okay. Later. Okay, perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is action on the minutes. We're looking for approval of the minutes from the November 25, 2024 regular meeting.
Move to be approved.
That was Mr. Snow and Mr. Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hanschel.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is monthly financial report. This is for the 10-month period ending October 31, 2024. And the financials have been very similar to what we've been seeing lately. City sales tax was up 7.3%. And county sales taxes continue to struggle, but compared to last year, it's up eight tenths of one percent. So, it has started to creep up a little bit. Operating revenues in general are up 2.1% compared to last year. And on the expense side, the total operating expenditures are 1.1 million below budget. So, we're continuing to do a pretty good job controlling expenditure. So, the financials continue to be good. It continues to be maybe a little bit more of a challenge on the revenue side than it was the last few years, but it's apparently to be expected. Okay. Next item is council member recognition. We have three members serving their last meeting on city council, and I'm going to cover them in alphabetical order. Doug Fowler was on council eight years. He was mayor of Brokeham for six years. And he was on the A and P Commission, I believe, seven years. He was started shortly after he came on council. And for a number of years, I know more than four, he's been chairman to the A and P Commission, I'd say maybe about five years. And he's been on some other committees and activities, but the A and P Commission was one of the big ones. Second one is Jerry Snow. He had, he was on city council 2012 to 2014. And then more recently, he was on for a full term 2020-2024. He also was appointed at one time to the quorum court. I think he was on that for almost two years. It's a two-year term. I don't know if everyone's familiar, under state law, if the governor appoints you to things like the quorum court, if you can't run for reelection. I remember I talked to Jerry, and he really enjoyed it. And I've actually run across a couple of people in Bellavista who did that, who were appointed to the quorum court and couldn't run again. The other one is Jim Wozniak. He's a record setter for us. He's been on city council for 14 years. And prior to that, he was chief of police. He was the first chief of police in Bellavista. He was, before that, he was with the Bellavista Division of Sheriff's Department. And he also had a stint on the quorum court at one time.
Eight years.
Eight years, yeah. So, that was before my time, so I wonder exactly what, how long that was. So, we really appreciate the efforts of these folks. And I do have a letter for each of them that we're going to present, which is thanking them for their service from the city of Bellavista. And some of the council members mentioned they might want to say something. Wendy, you want to start?
I'll work with my screens so I can stay on track. It's been an absolute honor to serve alongside the three of you over the course of the past two years. You three have fascinating personalities, but there are several common traits that tie you together. You each have resolve to do what you consider is best for Bellavista, even if it's not the easy or popular choice. You all have nerve to be afraid to ask hard questions, demand answers, and then keep asking questions until you're satisfied. Now, if we go on and on, back to the end of this, you three have expressed a dedication and loyalty to the community of Bellavista, and because of the three of you, Bellavista is absolutely better. Thank you for your dedication and your years of public service.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else you'd like to speak?
Chair, I'll say if you want to.
Okay. I'll go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity to serve you guys for the last 14 years. And I've also got 39 with public service. That's 54 years, 53 years, and I'm only 75, so my whole life has been serving others. And it's been worth it. Thank you for the opportunity. And then for everybody up there, especially the new ones, no matter how you feel on an issue, how strongly you feel, if you brought it up or not, or somebody else did, make sure, because you're only one person, make sure that when you talk to people, you talk to a enough number of people who are for it and the exact number of people who are against it. Don't just forget the other guys. And don't just talk to 30 on one side and three or four on the other. Make sure you give it equal stance, because you are one person among 17,000 voters or whatever it is, and maybe not everybody feels that way. Pay attention, use common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Great.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to say, you know, thanks to all three of you guys. You set the bar very high. It's been an honor sitting down at this end of the day with Doug. First thing that he told me when I got here was advocate, be an advocate for yourself, be an advocate for everybody that you represent, the community. And I certainly took that to heart. You know, you get into this world, and it looks easy, and it's people like this that make it look easy. It's not, you know, Doug in particular has always come very prepared. I try to model myself after how he handles himself. A ton of respect. Mr. Snow down there, I think I was a little more adversarial with him. He's a very intelligent man, great guy, and same for Mr. Wozniak. You know, we have time at the MLB, or the municipal league, I'm sorry, to actually kind of hang out and get to know each other. And that's a very special time, because otherwise, you don't know who you're sitting next to, really. But like I said, I'll keep it short. I appreciate you guys. It's been an honor, and thank you.
Larry?
I guess a few words about you to the councilman. Doug Fowler, for one, I'd like to thank for his service on the council. We may not have agreed with Doug on everything, but Doug represented really a core of the community, not the outliers, but core. And so, he represented a majority of the citizens in the positions he took and the actions he led, particularly the infamous one, the short-term rental housing regulation. We were singled out in Bellavista compared to other communities in the state that had done similar things, whether we had just a group of activist owners, I don't know, but I know other communities have had similar legislation like we passed. Now, I'd like to thank him for his years of service as the president of TAN, and he served there with diligence, and he certainly did a great job with the A and P Commission, brought them back into, brought them back into a formal organization and structure of the beneficial community. Mr. Wozniak, I'd like to thank you for your service as well. Long-term service, 39 years, that's a long time. And I worked with you for a while, and it's been a pleasure serving with you on the council. We've not always agreed, but you've always taken a position that reflects folks that you know in the community, and we have to be, have to be proud of that, because that represents what we do up here. Mr. Snow, thank you again. You've been here once before, and you came back to jump into the fray, and a good service to your customers, to your residents, in your community, in your work, particularly in others. So, thank you.
Okay. This is my opportunity now. I didn't know we were going to do it now or at the end of the meeting. I didn't really write anything down. I had a lot of things swirling through my head, you know, and I couldn't really necessarily land on any one thing. But the first thing I would like to do, my wife Rose is here tonight. And that means everything to me. And I do apologize. I am an emotional person. I am. You know, people don't, I think, think about the people that might be at home, a spouse, you know, or children, you know, family, whatever it may be. But without them supporting you, you're really nothing. And Rose, I mean, she was so patient. I will tell you, and you knew people, you're going to find this out. You're going to spend an ordinary amount of time on the phone or go and meet people where they are. And I would recommend the latter. I know there might be a little uneasiness there sometimes, but generally, I never had an issue in that regard. But, you know, we would be traveling somewhere in a car. It could be a four or five-hour trip, and I might be on the phone for four hours whilst she was driving. I mean, sincerely, you know, trying to talk to people and, you know, work through issues and, you know, their concerns and trying to figure out solutions and whatever, or just spending hours in our sunroom with all these papers piled all around. Always have a pile of papers beside my chair, just sitting there, you know, just ready to go through. But anyway, I so much appreciate you, Rose. I love you with everything I have. Thank you for coming. And then Laura, for your kind comments, I really appreciate it. You know, we had a kind of a core group of people that gathered together, you know, and worked together on some different things, and I appreciate all of you. As for me, you know, I'm just, I'm just really just a person from the community is all I am, just live and pour, claim, plan, and build up this stuff. I'm no different, I'm no better, don't have a different life than most everybody that lives here. You know, we all have our own different experiences and, you know, that mold and shape who we are, and people in our backgrounds, that maybe we want to emulate and try as best we can to be like them. That's particularly the case for me. You know, my father played a big role in my life. Tonight would have been his 91st birthday today, December 16. And he passed away November 18, 1974. And I was a senior in high school, and, you know, it just kind of allowed me, you know, just to kind of figure things out. And I kind of muscled my way through that my whole entire life, but what I've been able to do is lean on and rely on other people who stood as examples for me, and were really strong people, and leaders and advocates within the community. And at the end of the day, that's really all I tried to be. I made a commitment to the people in this community that I would give you everything I have, and that's exactly what I did. And you know, when you take positions, there are going to be people that are not going to be happy with you. And sometimes, you may be part of me, and for saying it just straight up, part of me, sometimes you're just going to piss people off on both sides on the same subject. It's just kind of the way it is. But, you know, you just kind of have to suck it up and kind of go with that, right? And people can be very unkind, I will tell you that. And I hope the new people that are going to be in this row, you're going to have people that might be like that, ignore them, don't pay any attention to them, don't go online, don't read any of it, don't pay any attention to you, because all it's going to do is drag you down. Just keep looking forward and just keep doing your thing, whatever that is, okay? Do your research, do your homework, land on your decision, and live with it, okay? So, to the people, the residents of Bellavista, thank you so much for entrusting me the last eight years. I'm kind of having mixed feelings, you know, and I'm continuing forward, but at the same time, I am looking forward to, you know, a little extra free time. I'll tell you, tomorrow afternoon, I'm going flying, you know? I'm really looking forward to that, because I'll be freed up to do that a little bit more soon. So, people, community, thank you so much for the trust that you put in me, and I hope I satisfied you to some degree. So, thank you very much.
Mayor Alton, please, Allen.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I'd just like to say it's been a great honor to have served the people of Bellavista these years. I can't think of anything that's been more enjoyable than to have been a member of the city council and to do what I could to help the people of Bellavista. I was asked if I was going to make a speech tonight, and I said yes, it was going to be very short, and we said, thanks for the members.
Thank you. I'll pass out the letters while we're on the subject. Thank you, Jerry.
I told my wife I wouldn't do this, but I'm going to. I have a philosophy. As you go through life, whatever be your goal, keep your eye on the doughnut and not on the hole. Think about it.
Before we move ahead, I will mention, so we're on the subject of different things. City of Bellavista was announced today, was honored as a trendsetter city for 2024, and that had to do with the street department and the asphalt zipper that we got, and has really helped us be more efficient with the roads, saved us money, and has helped us do a better job. So, that honor is from the Arkansas Times, and there'll be an award given out at the Arkansas Municipal Aid this winter. So, this is the third time Bellavista was named a trendsetter city. Next matter is, I've entertained a motion to suspend rules of order and procedure and allow all ordinances unattended to be read by title only.
So, sir?
That was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hanschel.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Thank you for that. First item of the new business is an ordinance authorizing participation of City of Bellavista in benefit program four of the Arkansas Local Police and Fire Retirement System, LOTFEE, for eligible employees who are fighter, fighters, or police officers. And we had some discussion about that at the work session. Jay, so?
This is courtesy of Linda, our HR director. You saw this very same issue last month in the form of a resolution which you adopted. We presented all that material to LOTFEE a day or two after that meeting, and they insisted they want an ordinance and not a resolution. So, I tried to have a conversation with their staff about why they were insisting on that, and well, it's a city, it has to be an ordinance, it can't be a resolution. So, I knew they were misunderstanding, or at least I thought they were. I didn't have any success getting through to an attorney for them, and so we decided it would be better and easier to just ask you to re-adopt this as an ordinance than to fight the bureaucracy a little block. So, this does the very same thing you voted on last time. This allows our employees that spend time volunteering in either police or fire to get some additional credit time toward their LOTFEE retirement. And it's a minimal, there is a cost, it's a minimal cost, I don't have the exact figure here. I would say it was in the hundred-something dollar range a year or something, I mean, it was.
Yeah, I think it was $20 a month.
Yeah, okay. So, that's what this does, and so I'm just going to ask you if you would, suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading, and re-adopt this issue again, please.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, go to third and final.
Take it.
That was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wozniak. Roll call vote on the motion, and vote to the third, suspend the rules, and vote to third and final.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hanschel.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'll read it for the third and final time. Ordnance authorizing participation of the City of Bellavista in benefit program four of the Arkansas Local Police and Fire Retirement System, LOTFEE, for eligible employees who are firefighters or police officers.
Make a motion to be approved.
Take it.
That was Mr. Snow and Mr. Wozniak.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hanschel.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Question?
Yes.
Procedure question for the attorney. Because this needs to be implemented correctly and timely, we need to adopt a.
No, we don't need to adopt a emergency clause. The ordinance that's in your packet is the exact ordinance and the only ordinance that they would accept. And in fact, I think that it's not drafted, I'm just going to be honest with you, it's not drafted very well, but we could not change a comma or a word in it, or they would not accept it. So, there's a sentence on there, it's effective immediately. I think it is effective immediately anyway, because it's not a general and permanent nature type ordinance. But this is what they wanted, and this is what I'm going to give them. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Next one's a resolution adopting a city budget for the city of Bellavista for the calendar year 2025, appropriating money-free general expenditure and for other purposes. We went over this at the work session and a little bit at the city council work session also, special work session, I should say. So, I don't know if there's any more commentary, or do you want to go ahead?
I guess the concern that I have is we have some programmed, or at least proposed, capital expenditures in this five-year budget plan that probably is going to cause us some gray hair and some anxiousness in order to get somewhere, all of it implemented. And so, it's a challenge, it'll be a challenge to the council coming up in '25 and '26 and '27 as to how we address that, because our revenue is, our expenditure this year is supported by three quarters of a million dollars being transferred out of our reserves into that to balance the budget. So, it says next year could be worse, depends upon where the economy is and what our revenues are to support our need for projects and operations in the city. for projects and operations in the city. So.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilms, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hunchell.
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the appointment of Mayor John Flynn to serve as a city governing body member of the Bellavista Advertising and Promotion Commission, effective January one, 2025, replacing Doug Fowler. As I mentioned in the work session, Brandon Kelly, who is a key person helping to run the A and P Commission, came to me and asked me to replace Doug. And they asked me, two people from the city and four people from restaurant and lodging and one person at large. That's how, that's by state law, that's how the A and P Commission's made up. So that's what led to this resolution. Is there any discussion? Jerry?
I'm sorry, but I cannot support this appointment. And I understand that my concern is not with John Flynn personally, but with the position. It does not seem to be, the optics of this matter, this doesn't seem to be defend. I mean, we have the mayor of the city of thirty-five thousand, four departments and two hundred employees. It just doesn't seem that the mayor should have the time to appoint himself to the Advertising and Promotion Commission. And we have, we have new members coming on the council that would make excellent members of this commission. I just, as I said, this doesn't seem like the optics of this would actually serve the city.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I apologize, Mr. Wasniak. I was going to say, this is one, this is something I'm really proud of, the Advertising and Promotion Commission. We started this, this Peter Christie and Cassidy and Travis, who was our economic development manager at the time, and myself, just kind of kicking around whether this would be viable for the City of Bellavista, because it's, the A and P tax is funded by taxes imposed on short-term rentals and prepared food within the city. And we thought that, you know, we were probably able to generate about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in taxes for the year to help support the marketing, branding and promoting Bellavista, where our city, right directly to the south of us, Benville at the time, they were generating about three and a half million dollars. Fayetteville, they were probably generating about five and a half million dollars. And here we are at a hundred and eighty. And I wasn't initially the chairperson for the commission. Just kind of fell on my lap. Our chairperson decided the next state's left and moved to the fourth. But I'm really proud of the work of this commission and what's taken place. Brandon Kelly, he is phenomenal at what he does. Of course, they manage a lot of other things just besides promoting branding and marketing. And as we were going through, kind of like formulating, setting up and moving forward, we had so much work to do. And Brandon's and my goal was to be sure that whenever we were done with it and it was passed on to someone else, that whoever got it would say, these people had their act together. They really did a great job and they left us in a good space. And that's where we are right now. I certainly wouldn't be opposed. I mean, it doesn't really matter. My opinion's not going to matter after the day, for sure. But I would think right now, or I would say that the commission needs a little bit of stability until some other members of the council maybe got involved and understood the responsibilities of the commission, because you have to act in certain manners. There are certain rules that are put in play and you have to kind of play within this particular space. You can't play outside of there and you can get yourself into trouble. So having the mayor, I think, be seated on this commission at least for a little while, until some other city council members kind of get up to speed a little bit, I think will be a good thing. So I mean, unless maybe it would be Craig or Larry that would want to step in maybe. And like I said, just until the board members just fully understand what the responsibility of this commission is and have it act within that. So anyway, that's just my opinion.
Mayor, I have a motion, right?
What's your proof?
Second.
That was Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler.
Said I have a motion, right?
What's your proper procedure and then just.
Mayor, you have to recognize somebody for them to be recognized. You didn't recognize anyone. Someone needs to be recognized before they make the motion.
Do we have to, so? Once we make a motion, a second, should I talk to somebody about a non-motion or should I have a vote? That's what I wanted to.
Well, it would depend on what the motion is as to whether or not it could be in order at that particular time. Typically, we don't do that. You have a, you have a motion to approve in a second.
Yeah.
I think I made my motion before there.
You indicated you want, you get to what the motion is.
Say what?
What is your motion?
My motion is that it's meant to be tabled until after the first year in the council tax office.
Mayor, the difficulty here is that you recognize Mr. Snow. Other people just start making motions and seconding without being recognized by you, Mayor. So if you want to entertain Mr. Snow's motion first, see if there's a second for that. And then if there's not, or if there is, deal with that motion and then go back and deal with final resolution of the main question. If you do that. I didn't hear what you said. Oh, okay, all right. So Mayor, if there's no second, then the motion dies to lack of a second. And you would, you could entertain a motion to approve the resolution if you're ready to do so.
Okay. Mr. Wasniak, do you have a motion?
I just, I don't, I don't, Jerry, no.
No, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve what we got here.
I have a second. Okay. That was Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
No.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hunchell.
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. Next resolution is approving the mayor's reappointments of Barbara Na, Susan Santos and Sally Benson to City of Bellavista Public Library Advisory Board for terms ending December thirty-one, 2028.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wasniak, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hunchell.
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Next one's a resolution establishing residential commercial rates for solid waste, trash, election in the city. And it's an attachment indicating what the rates are. It, per the contract, it was increased by about five, well, I guess it was exactly five percent. And that was based on the CPI for water, sewer and trash. Any discussion?
Move to approve. Second.
It was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hunchell.
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Next one's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk into an eleven amended animal services contract for animal sheltering services with Bellavista Animal Shelter, Inc.
Move to approve. Second.
It was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler, roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hunchell.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. I have announcements. The next city council work session is five thirty PM Tuesday, January twenty-one, 2025, at Bellavista Police Training Room. Next city council regular meeting, six PM Monday, January twenty-seven, at Bellavista District Court. Planning Commission work session, four thirty PM Thursday, January two, at Bellavista District Court. Planning Commission regular meeting, four thirty PM or immediately following the board's only adjustment, Monday, January thirteen, 2025, at Bellavista District Court. Board of Construction Appeals, three PM Tuesday, January fourteen, 2025, if necessary, to fire station number four at the conference room, sixteen thirty-nine, Forest Hills Boulevard. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Do you know what time the swearing in is on the first of Bellavista?
Candidates, you know what the time is swearing is, is on January one. Drive that down.
Traditionally, it's at the old courthouse on the square.
Yes, the time. Ten AM.
Nine o'clock.
Ten AM.
Okay, thank you. I wish everybody joyous holiday season. And I want to once again thank our retiring guests. Thank you for being between the three of us. I think this guy, the city council partner, fourteen plus eight plus six, what is that? Twenty-eight years of service, pretty impressive. Thanks so much.
Motion to adjourn to the very last thing.
Sounds good. Thank you.